Stand for the pledge. Amanda, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Bear? Trustee Bedinger? Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Knudsen? Trustee Mack?
Here.
Trustee Patterson? Here. Mayor Bockr?
Here. All right, let's get going. I am going to turn this over to Ty Long from RCAC to present his cost of service analysis. Thank you, Ty.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this on? We're good? All right, as Mayor said, my name is Ty Long. I work for a nonprofit called the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, or RCAC. We are, our mission is to help rural towns throughout the western U.S. with water, wastewater, solid waste, housing, economic development. I'm based in Denver, and I cover the state of Colorado. And so, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the findings from the cost of service analysis. And I think some of the objectives, how I kind of want to structure this a little bit, is as we get started, I'd like to spend maybe about 20 minutes just some of the basics, the underlying principles that we follow when setting water rate structures. And then I want to move into this model that RCAC has developed. It's an interactive model where we can actually take input and say, what happens to our budget after five years if we bump our rates up $2 per month? Are we making too much money? Are we charging the wrong people? Is it affordable? We have, that model can provide that. And so, that's why I wanted to have it as a workshop, so that we could actually kind of work through that, with the intent being, hopefully, maybe there is some consensus, some agreement. But my purpose here is to give you the best information you can to make the most informed decision about your water rates as they stand, and as they move forward with whatever pay on you foresees in the next five, 10, 15 years. So that's my goal. So that's where I want to start briefly, is with this presentation. And so, I'll talk a little bit about what the model incorporates and what that means to the rate structure as well. So, some of the objectives for this evening's workshop, we just want to understand how the calculation for base charges and volumetric charges cover the full cost of providing water. That's really the key. We often think it shouldn't cost that much to bring the water from the source to the tap, but there is so many, so many factors involved in between that. So many pipes that, some of them are well aged, need replacement now. Others are brand new, but we need to start building up reserves to replace that in 50 or 60 years, right? And I want to also demonstrate the difference of the rate structures on customers. So there's multiple ways that we can structure it. And so, I just want to show that impact, where it gives us the revenue across all four structures, but how we get there is entirely different, and it impacts different customers in different ways. And then, just briefly, to discuss the factors that impact some of these assumptions that we are making. So, with that, water system objectives. So the first, we have kind of four components here. What we're looking for is this full cost recovery. Basically, what does it really cost to provide water? Probably want to do some encouraging of conservation. We're in the west. Water rights are, you know, if we're in a drought year, source water can be tough. So, I don't quite know what the council's view on water conservation is, but that can be interjected into the model itself. Fostering any business-friendly practices. We'll consider that. And then, the big one for all of us, I mean, all of you in this room are probably paying this water bill, right? You're not just the council members. So, but we want to consider affordability and what that means for your residents. So as we get into full cost recovery, really the key is we need to bring in enough revenue to cover the full cost of running the system. So that, there's three components with this. There's operation and maintenance, right? The infrastructure to get that water there. When that infrastructure fails, you're going to have some capital cost. So O&amp;M costs tend to be the annual needs that you have in your system, annual expenses. Capital needs are those big-ticket items that last 30, 40, 50 years, that you can't just save up in the coffers for one year and replace your water tank. You need to, you need to spend 15 years building that reserve up. And then, so capital needs are where you're likely going to be looking at grants or loans from some of the federal or state funders. And then, when you take those notes out, you have a debt service that you need to consider as well. Encouraging conservation. You can use pricing to encourage customers to reduce water consumption. I know that in your current tiers, if you use a lot of water, you guys charge for that, right? It's different for the customer who charges, who uses 5,000 gallons versus the customer that uses 100,000 gallons. They pay a lot more for that upper-end tier for that usage. But this, this does have a component, especially if you're concerned with source water capacity. Are your springs going to produce like they have been for the next 20 years? Like, if not, if that's a concern, encouraging conservation might be a good thing. Fostering business-friendly practices. Use pricing to encourage businesses and agriculture to locate your community, stay in your community. If this is something that you want to do, this is something to consider, right? Depending on what type of source you have, do you even have the available water rights to do that? Is a big question. But if economic development is something that you're looking at, you always have to consider the water and wastewater infrastructure. And then maintaining affordability, so that we ensure customers in the system are able to afford it. So what we're going to, we're going to talk about the affordability. It's really going to be focused on the median household income of Peonia. And AWWA, the American Water Works Association, they have a percentage out there of roughly about 2%, 1.5% to 2% of your income should not, or, sorry. 2% of your income should not exceed your monthly water bill. That's kind of, anything over that is considered unaffordable. Keep in mind, when we talk about this more, we're going to be looking at median household income. So, 50% of those customers, this might be unaffordable for, based on that percentage. So that's kind of a general industry guideline that we want to adhere to. And if we can get under that, we can, we can, we can't easily say, but we can, we can say that we have done due diligence to make it as affordable as possible. And so, that's the balance that we play, always. Affordability versus funding and seeing financial sustainability in the water.
Water and wastewater.
Oh. Sorry, that's a YouTube video. I didn't actually know that it played. So, one thing that we're going to talk about, we need to understand the water revenues, where they come from. But really, when we do cost of service analysis, we really just want to make sure that we have encompassed everything that is involved in the water, and then make sure we have the revenue to support that. That's really the essence, this is very simple equation to satisfy, but it becomes more complicated as we start going. So full cost pricing. The goal of full cost pricing is to have the charges for water cover the entire cost of running the system today and into the future. I don't know what water rates were probably back in the 70s, but that's when the Clean Water Act went into play, and that's when everybody started moving towards putting in municipal drinking water systems. There's a lot of funding out there for it. A lot of systems, I see this all the time, never bumped up the rates in the 70s, 80s, and even probably in the 90s, because that, that infrastructure was fairly new. There was no need to have to replace it. Now, we're sitting on that infrastructure's 40, 50, 60 years old, and now it's coming due, but we don't have those 40, 50, 60 years that we should have been building reserves to replace it. So now, we're having to play catch-up. And then, federal funders are requiring not only that we can pay that debt back, but we also then have to put coffers away for the future replacement in 50 or 60 years. So that, what ends up happening is we're actually, this generation now, and probably for the next 20 years, is effectively almost buying two water systems. You're paying for the past one, where revenues weren't built up in reserves, and you're paying for the future one that's required from all of those funders and those notes that you had to take out. So, when we look at full cost pricing, we have to consider that as well. And there are many ways in which you can get to the right dollar figure. And so, that's what I want to talk about just briefly, is some of those philosophies and ideas. So there is this idea of payment for access versus payment for volume produced. But right here, fixed charges for fixed cost, variable charges for variable cost. We're going to follow that principle, at least in theory, at the beginning. What you're going to find, that is not affordable. There's just no way that's going to happen. No water system I've worked with has ever done that. Because if we follow this, I can tell you right now, your water, your base rate water bill for users in Peonia would be $81 a month, right? So, we're not going to do that, though. That's fine. We have other ways to generate revenue. So, a little bit of an exercise, I want to just focus on right here, revenues for rates. We're going to kind of play with that number a little bit. It's just a hypothetical. It's not related to Peonia at all. And so, payment for access. Basically, it's, in its purest form, everyone in the water system pays for, pays the same amount for access to the system regardless of how much water they use. You guys don't apply that structure. I appreciate not applying that structure. This is what we call a base rate. $25, use what you want, pay $25, that's it. A lot of small systems do it. Administratively for billing, it's easy, right? That, that's the advantage. However, the cost of water is not really accounted for in that, that capacity. You have somebody on the, on the corner of the street that uses 5,000 gallons, and somebody else that uses 100,000, they're paying the exact same thing, right? So, I think we kind of understand that concept pretty, it's pretty easy to understand. There's this other idea of payment for volume of product received. In its purest form, everyone in the water system pays for the volume of water received, and only for that. So if you use 100,000 gallons, that's what you pay for. If you use 5,000 gallons, that's what you pay for. Again, it's not hard to administer, but if you have a bunch of fixed costs, like a debt that has to be repaid, and they don't care how you get it, this is really focused on how much water people use. And if they choose not to use it, or it's a wet spring, you won't have the revenue to make your debt service payments. So this in itself also is not ideal. So, we tend to find some combination there. Just a couple numbers, not related to Peonia, just as an example here. But, in this case, for volume produced, it's just per thousand gallons. There is no base rate involved. So, with this type of calculation, you do need to know that the total revenue needed from the rates and the gallons sold. And you simply just plug them in, and that's what you would get, using that formula. Pretty straightforward, right? The other one, oh, we talked about this, but I do want to get into it a little bit further here. Base charge for fixed cost, volumetric charge for variable cost. Or, in your case, volumetric charge usage, right? That's the same term here. In its purest form, all the fixed costs of a water system would be covered by the base charge, and all the variable costs will be covered by, by the volumetric charge. In the rate model, we have broken out your budget to fixed cost and variable cost. So, Peonia is exactly what I would expect. About 90% fixed cost in your water system, about 10% variable. And there's very few things that are variable, chemicals, electricity. But it, it doesn't matter if you produce 1 gallon or 50,000 gallons, you still have to pay an operator. You still have to pay that debt reserve. You still have the pipe in the ground. And so, those are, are charges that aren't, aren't relevant to how many gallons of water you produce. And so, in this case, in this example here, what, what they're trying to demonstrate is, out of the revenue, only 76% of the, the expenses, 90 to, 91 to 9. That's roughly what Peonia is, and that's what most systems are, right? So, using this as a theoretical model, it would be, revenue would be 90% generated from base, base rate, and 9% would be from usage rate. That's, that's the idea there. So that's, that's what we're showing here. So things like utilities, chemicals, that's your variable cost, with your fixed cost over here. So, your revenue rates total that, but this is how it's split out. Right now, Peonia is more on a, probably 60/40. 60% base rate, 40% usage, which is fine. There's no problem there. Except, the only issue would be if it's a wet spring. You're probably not going to have as much billable water. So, just wanted to kind of show, in this case, here's, you have your fixed annual cost. You have 450 accounts. So, total bill for each, each account would be 648. You divide it by 12, your monthly bill is 54. And then, we get into this, and then, the variable cost for 52, gallons sold, it's $1.59, right? So that would be in a very strict base and usage rate. This is the structure that Peonia uses, but not this idea of the base rate for fixed costs and usage rate for variable costs. There is this idea that we just set a base rate, and then we just make up what we need to with, with usage. That's also similar to what Peonia does. It's not just made up. There is numbers and evidence to support why the base rate is there. However, the lower the base rate, the higher, the higher your usage has to be, right? We have to balance these to generate the revenue. And so, I don't want to go through this calculation. It's just the same numbers, but we understand this. It's, instead of using the fixed rate for, for base rate, there is a more palatable, affordable value given for base rate, and then we make up the additional revenue with usage. So in this case, what they're, what they're showing here is a price per 100,000 would be 637. So, in the previous one, we had a base rate, this one, we do not. 637 plus the $25 base charge. So, out of these, we have the, the four different scenarios that we talked about. You have just a straight base rate, right? Everybody's charge is same. Doesn't matter how much water you use. We have this idea of just by volume. So no base rate, but you just charge per, per thousand gallons. This is, the, this is using fixed costs are covered by base rate. And so, you see a higher base rate with a lower usage rate. Or, if that was unpalatable, you could say, we're going to say $25, but we're making up this, with the usage of 637. So, in this concept here, every, every single one of these structures gets to the exact same revenue. That's what's important. It's just how you get there is really the decision to be made. It's, every community is different. It really is the dynamics of the community that distinguish this. There's no right or wrong here. There's advantages and disadvantages to each. And that's just what I said here, with the four rate structures, get there. But each approach has a different impact on the customers. So these are just four examples of customers with their, their usage per month. Hypothetical, but 1,000 gallons for, for a single individual, 4,000 gallons for a home, if you got a mansion, probably some lawn irrigation, 12,000 gallons a month. And then, if you're a business that uses a lot of water, 34 gallons, 34,000 gallons. Just some quick assumptions to, to put together this idea here. So these were the four rate structures that we talked about. Here is if you bill it across, across the equal amounts, right? We can clearly see there's some disparity in this. There is not any type of fairness built in here. The single person should probably not be paying the same amount as the mansion or the commercial business, right? Pretty, pretty straightforward. Payment for volume of product used. This is getting a little bit better when we look at fairness, probably, in this example. However, the system, the system does run that idea of, can we actually, what, what if it's, we're relying heavily on these people for water consumption to pay our bills? And so, if they choose not to use water, you won't have enough revenue coming in. You won't be financially sustainable. Using the base, base charge for fixed cost, this theoretical, this is where we would stand. So, again, it's somewhat better, but one would argue that, that maybe it's still, some fairness might hurt the single person. And then, using just a, that, that random number has some justification here. We start to maybe see a little bit more affordability, a little more fairness across the, the way. That single person paying $31, so, so there is some component of the base rate in there, which she, this person, single person should pay less than a single-family home, which should probably pay less than the giant sprawl on a, on an acre of land, which should probably pay less than, than, than a resident, or a, a commercial tie-in. So, again, all of them have advantages. This is more of what Peonia has done with justification for the base charge, and then let's make it up in usage. So just as the matrix here, you can kind of see. So, I will stop it right there. Any, any questions from trustees? Yes, sir.
So any of those base rate charges make you very susceptible to conservation, correct? I'm sorry, the, the water usage rates, if you're relying heavily on those, and people decide to conserve water, you're much more vulnerable as a water system?
That is correct, yes. If, if conservation was something that was a major concern for the, for the town, having higher, higher revenues generated from usage would make it more vulnerable to, to paying bills. Base rate, again, you're getting it regardless of whether or not somebody uses 1,000 gallons or 100,000 gallons. The base rate, everybody's paying. And then, on top of that, the, the volume that they're being billed is based on the usage. So, any other questions? So, just, just a few things to think about as you're going through all of these next year, halfway through this year. If you're looking at revenue projections and saying, what's going on, here's going to be a few things to just consider that might be influencing that. So, as rates go up, usage goes down. So that, that does make sense. A rule of thumb is typically, usage will go down 3% or 4% for every 10% increase in rates. Now, what I've seen, while that, that rule of thumb applies, in practicality, what I've, what I've noticed is, that, that rule applies for year one, maybe year two, but by that time, everybody has then adjusted to these new rates and are weighing the advantages of having that green lawn versus paying that extra, like, they understand what that rate impact is going to be, and, and become more comfortable. And you start to see usage go back to where it was prior to the rate increase. But there is an initial usage decrease for the first year or two. If you have any population change, now I know there's a moratorium, I believe, right now, is that correct? So, population change probably isn't going to have a big factor. When we discuss the rate model, again, there will be an idea of growth, but growth is going to be focused on water usage and not individuals moving into the community. So I'll clarify that when we have it on the screen. But population change can and would affect your revenue coming in. If it goes, if you don't have as many people paying, clearly, you won't have the revenue. If you do lose a big customer, I don't know, based on the water usage that I saw, I think the, the customers are fairly diversified. You don't have that one big industry in town that's using a million gallons a month. And if they went away, how do you, how do you make up that revenue? I, I don't see that happening. You guys are diversified across the water companies and the residents and commercial to where no one, one water company or individual is consuming 10% of your water. That's not what you're seeing. So, for the case of Peonia, the loss of a big customer is not necessarily anything to, to factor in. But if you're looking to bring a big customer in, and they may, you know, if it's just a five-year deal, that's, that's something to consider on that infrastructure, that you may have to build for them. If they're only going to be there for five years, but you're, it's a 30-year note, you, you should certainly consider what that means to the, after they're, they're there. So, economic conditions. There was a lot of worry about COVID with people can, if, if we have this loss of jobs, can, can people pay their water bills? We didn't see it across the rural west, in all the small towns in Colorado I worked on, in the plains and on the slope. Didn't see the big concern that we thought it would be. But it is important to consider economic conditions as you're, as you're looking at the revenue. Although, there's not much we can do about it, it's just something to consider. Change in collection rates. I believe you guys increased rates last year, right? So, we are starting to see those revenues, and, and we can have them in the projection for tonight. So, but those, those changes in, in the collection rates as well. So, if you had a, if you had a high percentage of people not paying their bill, you know, what, what steps could you take to actually go out and, and get that water, the payment from them? So, I, I think, collection rates are fairly stagnant and pretty low, right? Like, I mean, collection rates are really high, meaning everyone is pretty much paying their bill. Yeah, thank you. This one's tricky, the weather. If we could forecast it, we probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. But, I think there's a general trend. I'll be careful how I say this, but I think more communities are becoming more cognizant of drought in the future. You can have that rainy spring, but, or rainy summer, but that year is going to be probably the outlier. When we, when we're looking at this water system, the projections are really going to focus on the next five years. Anywhere past that, because of assumptions made, it's not really useful to any of you for making decisions. You'll want to kind of revisit rates every three years, probably, three to five years, for sure. So, I'm not going that far out, but keep in mind, any change you make now affects the next generation, the next 30, 40 years of the town. So, it is kind of important to consider where this might be going in the future, if drought is something that becomes more and more cognizant for, for the community. And then, if you put water use restrictions in, like, there is a concern. Water use restrictions will equal less revenue. So what does that mean for all, like, there's a number of things that could come up. So, it's not just a, I mean, I think really, the, the whole purpose of the water system is to provide a clean, reliable source of drinking water for your residents. At the, at the end of the day, that's the purpose. However, the finance side of this would be tricky. If, if you don't have the water in your source capacity, you, you would likely have to put restrictions in, but you need to recognize that those restrictions will equal less revenue. And then, technology. So the fixtures are much more efficient than they, they have been in the past. This also means less water use. A new home built today is going to use less water than one built 20 years ago. Or if a, if a community is up, if a homeowner wants to upgrade their fixtures, or if you have, part of your conservation plan might be to identify ways to conserve water, like, simple fixes, like, putting a plastic bag in the tank of your toilet takes up that volume of water, like, you're actually using less water by something very simple. If your conservation plan is proposing those, recognize that that would cause a decrease in revenue. Probably minor, but still something to consider, especially if this is done on a grander scale. And then, there's multiple forecasts based on different assumptions. We're going to talk about those assumptions here in a second within the model. But a few things that I have done, I was conservative. So I did not want to say, here's what we're hoping for, what you guys had for revenue, or here's what we're hoping for usage. If there was any spots in, in the data that I had to estimate, like, an average, I always shaded and skewed it to the conservative side. Don't forget the, the price elasticity, like, it can't just be this fixed idea. It has to fluctuate as it relates to conditions. And so, we'll talk about this idea of, instead of coming back And so, we'll talk about this idea of, instead of coming back every year and saying, "We want to increase rates by $2," that there is a methodology within the madness of that model that allows for a percent growth, or not percent growth, but a percent increase year over year. So, if we're finding that we don't have the revenue we need, I can just plug in 1% for year 22 for rates to go up, and then it will calculate the projections from there. So, instead of coming back saying, "We need to go to $37.5," you can just say, "It just needs to go up 1% per year," which is pretty good, given that I think inflation is at 5.9 this year. So, that's really quite tricky to figure out, but you will have to, it's just a fair assessment that everything is going to cost more, and so, how do you capture that? Do you want to do it year over year at a small increment, or do you want to come back every five years and do a big increment? I have no, however you wanted to do it, it's really up to the towns. There is no benefit or, one with, it's tough, I'll just say. Changing rates every year can be frustrating for rate, or for, they're not ratepayers in the case, but just service users. But it, changing every year is difficult, but also that big bulk of an increase is also not very palatable. So, how you do that is really up to you, pros and cons for each. Use tools to stress test projections, so this is not my cup of tea, but there are ways out there, especially if you're working with engineering firms on other projects unrelated to water, and you're starting to see prices are going up, that is one way to kind of stress test. The American Iron and Steel Act really put a stress on infrastructure costs. And so, just recognizing what is happening out there in the field is really important when it comes to infrastructure. And then you're going to give some options. So, I actually have no, like, I just ran the data that I was given, and we used balance sheets from this year, audits, current sales data, and I was, most of the time when maybe you get some rate recommendations, it's, "Here's three rates, here's advantages, disadvantages, each one will get you where you want to go." But tonight, what I want to do is, it's absolutely fluid. I've given where the projections are currently and where we need to go, but we can start playing this game of, "How do we get there? How do we make it affordable?" And so, that's a consideration. There's two considerations as we go through this model. How do we maintain affordability? And how do we make sure we have the revenue we needed to provide the service at a full cost recovery? Or, and that's why I call it a cost of service analysis. This isn't a rate analysis, this is a cost of service. Here's what it costs to actually provide water, and so, how do we get to that point? And so, multiple directions that we can go here, but those options we can have, I will need a little bit of grace because the spreadsheet is an Excel document, and I have pushed the boundaries of Excel with the connections that you have. So, I am doing manual calculations now instead of having it auto-calculate for me, and some of these calculations are taking two or three minutes. So, we'll have some downtime, maybe, to take some questions during that time as well. But any questions about the information given so far? Yes, sir.
When you did your projections for what's needed, did you include what you talked about before? In other words, what, what we have to pay for the current infrastructure and what we need in the future? So, you did that.
Yes.
So, like, you talked about 30 to 50 years, what you're going to need because you replace things, so is that also included, I'm assuming?
It is, yes. There was a study by the engineering firm SGM. I use that data very directly to project out pipes that may not need to be replaced for 90 years. The assumption is, is that, I assumed an inflation rate, and that's what has been applied, but we all know that in 90 years, we have absolutely no idea. And so, it's a best guess at this moment, right now, and so, we've considered that. There was also a study by, is it JDS Hydro? That was also considered for some upcoming and near projects that need to be completed, and so, that's also been considered. The rate model is actually able to put in there that those projects are 10 years out, and so, I won't be accounting for them in today's rates, but kicker for all of this is, that 10-year project, you need to start building reserves now so you can get your cash that you need to do that project. So, we're going to see that as well. And I'll talk, I'll go through the rate model and discuss all of the background information, and then we'll actually get to the meat of the model, which is that, those projections. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I'd like to move to my laptop, and I will put the model up, and then we will continue there. Oh, oh, I just thought that was, I got it. There we go. Are we good? All right, wonderful. So, please, please stop me at any point in this because I don't want to get too far ahead. If something doesn't make sense, please let me know. So, as you can see here, we have multiple tabs on the bottom. We're going to go through each one of these. The big one that we are hoping to spend a little time on here is going to be the rates. This is where all of this work comes into play. So, we're going to start with just some, some simple stuff here. Past inflation, future inflation, these were, these are somewhat guesses. I can't tell you what inflation is going to be next year. It was sitting at like 2.9, but then I heard a cost of living adjustment of 5.9 for social security due to inflation. So, this one's a tough one, so I just bumped it up a tenth of a percent. That, again, is conservative. I think a 3% inflation rate is conservative for right now. We are also gathering the, any existing debt, so if we can see on here, there's two current notes that the town holds for water. We have the Water and Power Authority. This annual payment is directly from the amortization schedule, so this year, that's what the payment will need to be. The drinking water revolving fund is a straight across 23,000 each year, no adjustments there. Within the agreement of those notes, it was fairly unique, I'd never seen anything like it, like, for the reserve required, I think it's a wonderful thing here, that the funder required that, was it 110% ratio, which is really great. Most of them will say, "We want you to put away a year's worth of reserves in restricted funds for, and give you 10 years to build that up." And so, in this case, I think that that's a great way to structure that debt. We moved down here to a few other assumptions, and please, again, stop me if needed. So, the debt reserve, this number here is just directly pulled from the reserves allocated. And so, in the case, since you guys do generate that from your revenues, the reserves allocated meets the reserve required, so that's there. But it is within the existing reserves. You have to maintain that debt ratio. The operating reserves, quite a bit going into this formula real quick, I will explain it. The number came from the balance sheet of 478, 745. I minus 50,000 because when we talk reserves, for me, now, this is semantics in my case, like, this is what the model required. You guys have all this, but you needed to have an emergency reserve. I wanted to capture that because if I put in zero, it would say, "You need to, you need to have higher rates for an emergency reserve." So, we put in 50,000 there for reserves. Emergency reserves should be focused on the most integral piece of your system. If that fails, does your system fail? That kind of idea. So, you want to make sure that you have that, that those monies available so that you can replace that immediately, and you don't have to go out for a note or bring engineering firms in because without it, you won't be giving a level of service that your customers require. We minus 329, and that was the debt ratio, it's, I will need some help on this, Corinne. I know these numbers came, this is the debt ratio requirement, correct? Okay, great. And we minus the, and then I added back the 216 because this is monies that are set aside for the reserve allocation. So, what this means, though, is within operating reserves, you have 316,000, give or take, which is great, and then within the capital reserves, we're looking at 382. So, in total, between all existing reserves, there's 965,000, which sounds great until you see a couple more spreadsheets forward. So, that's a good number, but it's not nearly what needs to be there. And so, just coming down here is just a few more other details. So, past the target reserves, anything additional was put into capital replacement program, and that's this value you see right here. Median household income is important for affordability purposes. I believe this value was pulled from the most recent funder, probably from the Water and Power Authority, they asked median household income, or no, this was pulled from, sorry.
State demographics.
Okay, thank you. So, 41,683, which is below the state MHI, but we, we're going to use this when we look at the affordability because affordability is focused on the MHI of the community. Growth assumptions over the base year. So, I mentioned this here with the conservation factor. You see, I have 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%. That is effectively a 1% conservation factor per year, not 5 in year 5, okay? So, 1% conservation, I think, is a, that's pretty reasonable, especially since there's not much growth coming into the community, we would likely start to see a little bit more conservation. And to be conservative, again, that's this approach. If I said zero conservation and you had 2% conservation, you wouldn't be getting the revenue that are projected. The community growth factor is not actually people moving into the community, but rather water usage. And so, as you see, the first two years, I put down 0.0 because my, my assumption here is that if new rates or water bills are slightly higher than they have been, peoples are not going to just start dumping water again. They're going to be cautious until they see the first couple bills to understand what that means for them. So, we put zero, but then after about year three, we start to see they go back to their usage that they were expecting. The receivable write-off, that's just a pretty, it's a pretty default number there. The town of Peonya is well within everything I've seen on other systems. They have a high collection rate and not a lot of outstanding sales or bills from customers. For the intensive of this model, I just needed to put in the billing structure, and so, 1,000 gallons here, and then you bill monthly, so that's what this is here. If you didn't want to bill monthly, but you wanted to bill quarterly, that could be built into the model, but I would prefer, and I think the council would also prefer, monthly billing. Quarterly billing is really on small systems that don't have administrative staff to manage the behind-the-scenes. Default funding of asset replacements, again, this is, this is pretty standard for communities, but when we start to look at the capital improvement plan that we've developed, the idea here is, again, these are assumptions, it doesn't have to stand true for every situation, but if there's a replacement of any items between $0 and $50,000 that the town will pay in cash for that replacement, you're not going to be looking for a grant or go out and take a loan, right? Once we get over the 50,000, anything 50,000 to a million, you're going to hopefully get 50% cash, 50% grant. A lot of systems would, would come in and say, "Maybe 25% cash, 50% grant, 25% loan." But if you can match the cash, is matching funds, the grant opportunities are much better. So, having a higher, that concept of having higher cash on those replacements puts a town in a better advantage to get grant funding. And then, anything over a million, we really start getting into some of the finer details, but 10% cash, anything over 10 million, 5% cash. The kicker here is, no funder is going to give, give monies without some community buy-in. You have to put some financial weight in the game. You're not going to get a 50% grant, 50% loan. A funder won't actually give you anything like that unless you're saying, "I can put up $100,000 of cash," and then, you know, they can figure out on those bigger projects. But USDA or Water and Power Authority won't step up unless they recognize that the community is also willing to step up and put some cash. The capitalization threshold, not a big deal for the purposes of the model, but this 5,000 is what the town has marked as a capitalization threshold. Short-lived assets, a lot of this is not going to actually affect the rate structure for Peonya here. We didn't get into that too much there. So, the next, the next pieces on this parameter are your current rate structure. You have four different classifications: in-town residential, out-of-town residential, in-town commercial, out-of-town commercial. The schedules, A, B, C, and D are simply for the model, as you'll see below. There is a potential to do some meter analysis. As we get to that, I'll kind of talk about what that looked like for the town, if you wanted to bill by meter size. I know that there was some, some thoughts of looking into that, and I can, I can give you guys some insight on what that means. We can just skip these two. This is if a community wanted to do base rate. This is if you wanted uniform block rate, which is a different structure than this tiered block, which is what you guys have, where you have multiple tiers, right? So, we'll start here at the top. Remember, I said A, B, C, and D? So, this first column is in-town residential, column B is out-of-town residential, column C is in-town commercial, and column D is out-of-town commercial. You see, the numbers are the same across meter size because you guys don't, the meter size is not important. If it's a 4-inch meter or a 3/4-inch meter, you're still billing at that structure because it's based on classification. Here's where I had to make a few assumptions. The town has a very, I don't know if it's elaborate, but you have a lot of tiers within your billing structure. I believe it is up to 12 tiers, and the rate model could only really manage about seven of them. And so, working with town staff, we identified that roughly about 75% of the customers fall within that 1 gallon to 50,000 gallons, and so, that's where we were hoping to capture a majority. Actually, I believe it's 30,000, so it's lower than that. So, we were hoping to capture a majority of the base usage here, but this was an assumption that I had to make because I couldn't actually put your entire tiered structure into the model. But because a high majority of your customers and users are in those lower tiers, the bias of the model should not be reflected terribly high here. And then, we have those usages, and you're going to see some numbers that you may not have seen because if I had to make an assumption, I also averaged the usage charge. And so, these were some, some general numbers that we had managed. And so these were some, some general numbers that, that we had, had managed here. This total revenue at the end, this is what would be expected and this is actually not too far off. There is some error in this, right? Like we're, because I had to make these assumptions, that error is there. This number is not used in the model at all, but it, it would be roughly what, what should be generated in revenue. When we actually get to the rates, we won't play this what should be. It, it will actually, we're going to adjust the, the models and the tiers to come back and say, here's what it will be. The next column is capital improvement. So I've worked with Travis to identify, make sure all of the, the town assets within the water system are identified. And I also used the SGM and JDS Hydro study. So what this means here is I have, SGM identified every water main in town. I did take off the address for just sake of, of clarity here. But this water main, we, we could do this example here. Well, actually I can be more friendly. Sorry. So what this is saying, and this is kind of a core principle of asset management. This first item, there's 550 linear feet of this water main and just, I'm not sure where it is, but it is in town somewhere. I could give you the address, I could pull up that. But it is, it is given. It was acquired in 2020. Within the model, the engineer said to replace that per foot would cost 100 bucks a foot because it's probably under pavement, so you got to dig it out, you got to repave. There, there's just high costs. And so that's the current cost, or, sorry, I'm getting a little head here. 100 bucks is the current cost. That water pipe belongs to the water system 100%. There will be a few assets like pickup trucks that are used between water and sewer. So a few assets, it won't be 100% water here. The estimated life on this pipe is 100 years. Oh, sorry. Let me scroll back up. It's currently one year old, so there's 99 years worth of estimated life. The replacement cost in 2119, I guess, is going to be $1.1 million for that piece of pipe. Now, it costs about 57,000 in today's time, but if you put the 3% inflation across 99 years, that's where you get the 1.1. So there are assumptions given here. And so with that estimated future cost, we go back into the funding table that we had and it's over a million. So the town says we will aim for 10% cash, 50% grant, and 40% loan if you were to replace that. So what that means is that annually, the town needs to set aside $855, not a lot, but needs to set aside $855 for the next 99 years to achieve 10% of that $1 million. Any questions on that? Are we, are we taking questions from community members? I think you need to go to the microphone, sorry. And I, yeah, I pushed the power off, sorry about that.
Does that, does that number, the 855 per year account for interest as well? Is that like an interest-bearing investment?
It does, yes. If we go back to the parameters, we are making an assumption here with future, well, that's loan interest rates. I'll be honest, oh, return on investment, 0.5%. So it does, yep. So if we, if we take, oh, I'm sorry.
For the annual reserve required, so, so the assumption is that there's going to be inflation playing into this. So is that 855 required every single year or is there a way to structure this so it's lower in the early years and it ramps up as inflation goes up, as income goes up? Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I understand. So the 855 is, is just a straight linear assumption.
Okay.
That for the next 99 years, 855 would get you to that 10% cash you need for that replacement.
Okay.
So it's not, if you said that you didn't want to fund that so much in year two, but in year four, we're going to come back and throw money in, I mean, you could certainly do that, but I don't have the, the capacity within this Excel document to pull that, to pull that one off. So this is just straight up 855 every year for the next 99 years. So what we're really trying to do, this is a total replacement, right? We are saying we're going to have 10% cash in there. And so for the next, for each year, the annual reserve needed for this piece is 855. So it turns into a microcosm, that's a microcosm for all of these assets. So I've identified basically what it takes to get water from the spring to the customer's tap and everything in between, including the pickup truck to go check and do the maintenance on that, the skid loader that you might need, all of the pipes to get it there. All of that has been factored in. So a majority of this information actually comes from the SGM study. And then there's a bit more here. This item right here is listed, but notice I don't have a quantity because that is tank lining that needs to occur quickly that you guys are working on, on getting the funding for now. So I wanted to make sure that I didn't actually account for that in this model. One of the key ideas behind this model is that no single number is counted twice. So while you might wonder why I have dollar signs where I have dollar signs, it's because I didn't want to account for twice and either have higher rates that were needed or lower rates than what you needed. So it, it runs on that principle that it's just counted once. But I left it in here with the, the zero quantity because I went ahead and captured it in a different area within the model and I'll show that in a second. So just, I, I just wanted to, to let you, so depending on the age of the infrastructure also depends a lot on how much time you have to save up, right? So if, let's go up, I know there's a water main here. It has a short-lived timeline on it. This one, this is a water main that was put in in 1960. We, we need to get that replaced, right? So it has reached its, its really useful lifetime. And so the engineering firm identified this as a, a major need. The cost is about $800,000. I know if you put those projections in, you want to pay about 50% cash. There are some grant opportunities as well, so we try and take advantage of that. But because it needs to be replaced within three years, you don't have a lot of time to save. And so what that means is that there's $117,000 that needs to be put away just for that pipe. So that's why this is actually really important. If you can give yourself 20, 30, 40 years to save up for these assets, you don't see a big jump in rates. And that's why in the seventies and eighties, when no rates were changing because the infrastructure was new, that price is being paid now because these, these, there should have been coffers set aside to replace that pipe in 1961 and, and they weren't. So now we have to find a way to, to generate those funds quickly. And so it gets a lot easier after year one. There, there were two assets that were kind of coming due on lifecycle. You'll see them, but we'll spread that cost across five years. So it's not just, we're going to hit it hard in '22 and then we can bring rates back down. That, that's not the intent of this. We're going to look at it from a five-year perspective instead of a one-year perspective. So, so there's all these items, including your treatment plants. Your, your, your treatment plant, when it, when it goes down in 44 years, is estimated about a $15 million plant, right? So things, that's, that's just with that inflation. So what that means though is that you need to be putting aside $14,426 a year so that you can build up to 5% cash to replace that in 44 years. That's the intent here. These are just some empty values in case it was a big system. I have put in the interior coating here. And we have went ahead and, because it, it's somewhat already funded because of, is it, I always, it's not, ARPA, ARPA funds were going to be used to assist this. And if the, the town can, can get a matching grant for the cost, this, this cost will go down. But because that's an if, this is the conservative approach I'm taking. And so the assumption here is that cash amount needs to be generated. If you can generate half of that and get a grant, that's great. It would reduce this cost, but because that grant has not been secured, I would be quite nervous to put it into these projections. And then just down here are some other items that JDS Hydro had identified. These are really out there in the next 10 years or so. I think they were related a lot to water storage with some reservoir work and some lines coming from the tanks. But you have nine years to start building these reserves. So that's the intent here. Now, here's a number that's going to scare you. But it's, this is, this is the true cost of providing service. Your capital replacement program, I'm sorry, let me, to fully fund your capital replacement program, the town needs to put aside 1.357 million dollars a year. So we're shaking now in that sense, but what's, when we get there, it's not like my bill's got to be. This is why the theoretical can be $80. This number is a huge number into an expense, right? So with all of that being said, there, there's a few other items, but I know we're getting, it's a top of the hour and I really do want to spend more time in the model than I do explaining it. So the budget, I took it from the audits as well as the 2021 budget. I'm using that information to determine fixed versus variable cost. This is where that theoretical comes out. So the idea here is that out of your expenses, just for operation and maintenance, 682,000 are fixed. Doesn't matter how much water you produce, 72,000 are variable. So that's about a 90 to 10 split, maybe, maybe 88, 12, something like that. So that's where that theoretical comes in as well. So at the end of the day, remember I mentioned the true cost of water is actually associated with expenses? This is, this is one number that goes into expense with your capital improvement plan, 1.678. And you throw in the 1.3 that we had, that's our total expenses and the revenue we need to generate. Notice it's actually 96% fixed, fixed cost, 4% variable. For the model, I required, I want a user data from every user for one year for every month. It's a massive trove of information right here. The only reason why I'm using this is if you want to adjust any of your tiered structures, the model will now incorporate what everybody used in the past year and say, that's how much you're going to use minus the conservation factor. So we try to get as accurate as possible. So we're really diving into what people, not what town produced for water and what it built for water, but what each connection used for water for every month. So if we really say that our tier structure is at 5,000 gallons for the second tier and customer three used 12,496 gallons, we're going to, what would the new structure build that person at? That's what we're, we're looking at. So we're really trying to get into the weeds here on this revenue generating side of it. So there's no other need for, for this other than the current class is that 1, 2, 3, 4, or the A, B, C, D, in-town, out-of-town, commercial, residential. Here is the service ID. So if somebody wanted to know what their rates were going to be with a proposed new rates and they knew their meter ID, I could tell them roughly what it would be if they used the same amount of water. So these sales data though are from 2020 because I, I wanted a full year worth of, of data and calendar year made, made it easier. So here's where we get into the bulk of it. And this is where I do need and want input from, from the trustees. I have currently just carried over exactly what I had put on the parameters page. This is the current position where the town stands. And this number here in red is exactly what I was expecting, but this is what we need to try to remedy. And I, let me go ahead and make that a little, oh. Can I do it without protecting it? We'll just do it there. All right. So what this means here, real, in, in short terms is we have total expenses here. Notice our total expenses are extremely high for '22 and not so much for '23. And that's because of that capital improvement plan that I was pointing out. Some replacement of some items make this capital, your expenditures really high for year '22. But we, line 106 is revenue. So as we know, revenue should be more than expenses. Keep in mind, expenses are high because it's a capital improvement cost as well. All of that 1.3 that you saw in there, that, that is actually part of this total expense. All right? So the total cost of service for the town is that line. So how we generate this revenue is where we, we start to manipulate the model. Line 107, so I'll say, let me start with 108. Each year, this is a balanced budget. This does not mean that you are not, you don't have a balanced budget. What this means is that you're not fully, the, the red lines mean that you're not fully funding your capital improvement plan. So in five years with no change to your rates, your capital improvement plan is going to be underfunded by 1.2 million. Again, this is pretty standard with any small system that we do a cost of service analysis. The reason we do is because a, a community is looking for capital improvements. They want to know how much their rates need to be so they can pay off the debt. And can we afford it, right? Before they actually get into it and then they have to pay this debt and the rates are through the roof, that's the intent of this, is to see where you're at. And so if you wanted to fully fund that capital improvement plan, that's what we're, we're aiming for. Any questions before we start manipulating?
Do you just every now and then say a number so that the people that can't see can write something down?
Yes.
I'm thinking.
So, I'm sorry, when I point to a number, just, just verbalize it? Okay, perfect. I can do that. So given your current structure, remember we talked about fixed, fixed cost and base rate paying themselves? That's what this theoretical number is. If you wanted to go straight theoretical, you would, you would need $87.92 per month is a base rate. I did mention I would talk about the meter sizes just briefly. I did try to create a, a different model for meter sizes. Kind of fell apart on me a little bit, I'm not sure why. But there, there is some challenges to the town going off of meter size. While, while it is recommended, you only have a small amount of systems that actually have a different sized meter. And I don't know if there's appropriate justification for why one system has a two-inch meter and another one that's of similar size does not. And so I think it would be prudent for the town to either come up with some type of methodology or justification for putting a meter size on a specific customer. And so to, if I was to give you the ID- And so to if I was to give you the ID, if you were to go by meter size, you would run into some concerns of fairness because equivalent residents might be built differently because of the meter size and the justification of that customer has a one-inch meter and I only have it in that one has a three-quarter inch and they're both single-family homes, that that could be tricky. So if you do want to go to meter size in the future, and I recommend it, it is actually the most appropriate methodology for for billing, is is to make that a ten-year plan of if we replace a meter or and build a policy and then replace meters with what is needed for that that customer. But to do it right now would be quite challenging and actually very difficult to justify for fairness purposes. So what I will show just briefly here is what the theoretical would be. So you start to run this game. The theoretical for a three-quarter inch meter is eighty-seven ninety-two, like I mentioned. If we go up to a one-inch meter, the base rate would be one hundred and forty-six ninety or fifty-four. A two-inch meter would be two hundred and ninety-three dollars a month for base rate. And a four-inch meter would be four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per month of base rate. And the reason that is is a four-inch meter has to have some extremely large infrastructure behind it to support it. And that infrastructure is there to support that four-inch meter or that customer. That customer should be more heavily required to to pay for that infrastructure as well as the meter itself can take a maximum water usage. And so what it's actually looking at is to say with all the like a a three-quarter inch meter can roughly produce, I believe it's twenty gallons a minute at peak peak max. A four-inch meter could produce, I think, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred gallons a minute. I I should specify, I I'm not sure on that. But my point is, is it's not just a single linear line, right? It's exponential. And so based on the the capacity of the water system, engineering firms are looking at peak demand. You're required to build in peak demand and fire flow. So if that four-inch meter is there and they're not utilizing it, everything else behind it is built for them to fully utilize that four-inch meter. So it's really important if engineering firms are doing some work, make sure that customer actually needs that meter. And so for those those reasons, I would hesitate to for the town to move in a direction to build by meter size. One, because I think it's less than ten customers out of the sixteen hundred that we had that that had a different meter size. So their impact on the rates would also be small at this time. The last thing I'd like to say is that in the sales for the water companies, the sales are structured in the way that the the town bills the water companies, right? So if a water company has twenty users and you had a the master meter red gallons, we're dividing that gallons by the number of users and we're charging the water bill according to our current rates. Okay, so I did that within the sales as well. So the sales. I am correct on this, right? Cindy and Corinne for water company billing. So let me let me give an example. Just briefly. Sorry. So for example, I'm not sure what meter ID this is or what the name of this community is, but that's a meter ID. This this system has looks like twenty-four connections. The reason I structured it this way is that you guys build each one of those connections for there so there was a master meter number. I want to make sure I don't push the wrong button and then I always always mess up Excel here. So the master meter said this this water company used a hundred and fifty thousand gallons over this month. And there were twenty customers, I took one fifty divided by twenty. That's how you bill them. And then whatever that number is, it falls into that tier structure with that usage rate and the 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 base rate for out-of-town residential. That's how I I structured this. So this is actually the current billing structure that you use as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. Okay. So we need to make up some revenue. And we talked, there's a number of ways we can do this. I am open to anybody wanting to give an idea from the trustees on ideas. Nothing is set in stone. It's I'll I'll make the first adjustment. How about how about we do that? Let's just say what happens. So most of your users are the three-quarter inch meter, right? That's how I build it, but we're just going to do a one-dollar increase across all rate classes. And I'm going to go ahead and just drag that just in case. We have any anybody in the one. Now, this is where I need a little bit of grace because this takes a while. Formulas, I have to do the manual. Is this the calculate now button? I think that's the calculate now button. Is it? Okay. So see now it's thinking, so this is where. So while we're waiting and the silence is killing me, if you notice above where it says growth factors year two, three, four, five, this is where we have the opportunity to instead of just changing the base rate to a number, you could go ahead and say year two, three, four, we're going to put a one percent increase in on the base rate or the usage. This is taking longer than it did in the office, isn't it? So it did make a change, but we're still not where we need to be. So I actually have a kind of a closer idea. We're not going to play that because that's a that's such a long wait. Let's make a few bigger adjustments and see if we can get to the high point and then come back and see if we can dial it in a little better. So let's go to thirty-eight. So we'll do a six percent increase or a six-dollar increase just to see. Well, it's currently at forty-two. So sorry, if you look at the the line above, so. Yeah. And then that is sixty-three. Yeah, there's I think there's like three people on the one inch. So so now we can wait. Make sure I pushed it, yep. I just did that one line, but that's ninety-nine percent of the people in the sales. When when we go back, I'll make that small change. But I I need an explanation on what the
Is there more non-payment of bills when you bill electronically versus paper? You see any trends?
Just in in general for other communities or for Payonya? In general, I would I would assume that you're going to have less default. If you're like me and it's just an automatic bill, I don't have to worry so much about it. But I I'm always cautious in the summer because if my meter read is wrong and I'm billed for a million gallons, like that would make me somewhat nervous to have it automatically taken out. I don't know if I could actually give any correlation between that. I I don't know that information. But here, now we're starting to look actually not too bad. This is looking better. So again, I just want to point out row twelve here, positive annual cash flow means it is a balanced budget. But in years one, two, and three, we're not seeing the reserves that we would want. Or we're not fully, we're we're shorting the capital improvement plan. So when I work with communities, year one and year two, we never put enough reserves in. In order to do that would be a massive increase in the rates, and that's not what we want. But we do want to see years four and five fully funding the capital improvement. So we're getting actually quite close here. There there is concern with this year one still because of that that heavy cost. So we're putting a heavy reliance on either getting that grant or we're really going to dig into the coffers to support that and we're going to have to build it back. So after five years, we're in the hole, but we start, we're starting to to see improvement. That's the that's what we need to start doing. So in this case, what this is actually saying to some degree is that you're overfunding your capital improvement by that much money. But we have to balance that with this idea that we're we're our capital improvement plan is still underfunded by six hundred thousand. It was one point two million. It's now six hundred thousand. But here's here's another opportunity for us. Let's let's not go six dollars. Like, I think six dollars is a really great starting point. You're that's kind of the objective we wanted. But if we if we bump this down to, say, thirty-seven or let's let's go thirty-six and forty-six, let's do a four-dollar adjustment. I'll carry it, I'll carry that across the one inch just in case there was anything missed there. And I hate to make too many changes at once because I want to know the effect of every of a single change. But we know we're going to we know that this isn't going to do the trick. But this is where we balance affordability with meeting the revenue that's needed. Sorry. Oh, and I didn't scroll down far enough so we could have the dopamine button hit.
So theoretically, if we were to get a grant that would cover half of our expenses for the water tank in year one, twenty twenty-two, how would that affect our revenue, our reserves and our needs for reserves as it plays out?
I'll tell you in 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 a matter of the spinning wheel. So the we'll go to the CIP page. This is the water tank. So if we were to to make that assumption, this actually changes to thirty-three percent would be cash, sixty-six percent would be grant funded, part it through ARPA, part through the matching funds. That's the cash, right? So if we make, I'll go back to the rates page while we do this and we play this and we do it again, and we'll see what the the impacts would be. So it makes quite a big difference. That grant would would be huge. Notice notice your year twenty-two expenditures dropped quite a bit. So there's a heavy reliance on that grant.
On the budget page, is that based on the twenty twenty-two budget or was that based off the twenty twenty-one numbers?
It it is using the the nineteen audit, the twenty audit, and the twenty-one budget.
Okay, I know that out of the last few budget work sessions, we talked about reducing the wages coming out of the water fund quite a bit. So I'd like to see if if you have an approximate of where that's at now so that we could build that into the model as well.
See that again? Possibly. I I will say that 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 cost is not going in. I don't know what that adjustment is, but just to recognize how this model is using it, it's simply going into the into the it would be budgeted as an expense. So you're looking at one point six, one point, sorry, let me back up here. Six hundred, sorry, let me make sure that I'm giving the right number before I just start. Received. So what I would like to do is actually come back to the rates. So I mean, that's your total expenses. So I'm not I'm not sure what percentage that that would play in, but you're going to be talking ten cents probably. Like if you're even thinking, I don't I don't know what that reduction is. I can put it in and see what it does, but if we can't figure out how to meet that, it it's going to likely not have a big impact on the expenses overall.
Probably not worth the time to try to work it in now. What are the chances that you could make this worksheet available to us?
So the worksheet itself is protected and everything like there's over a million different tabs that are all hidden. What my intention is out of this, if there is a consensus that can be reached, is to to draft a written report. I will screenshot all of this information. It will all be available, but the actual working components of the the spreadsheet aren't aren't going to be available.
So we are starting from the assumption that we're going to keep our four current usage categories. And you mentioned the issue of fairness of going to the meter size. We have talked in the past about there being an issue of fairness with our current structure as well. The way we distinguish between in-town, out-of-town, commercial, residential is not necessarily a good reflection of actual water use or impact on the system. So I have you seen other communities that have a different model that you might recommend for us?
Yes, so industry standard would say by by meter size, right? And again, that is all the infrastructure is focused on the size of the meters downstream and how much water. It would it would consider all those meter sizes and say this water system needs X amount of gallons at peak demand. And that's a wonderful way to do it because the infrastructure behind it would then support that. For most small systems, that is a living challenge in the sense that it can't just happen overnight. And if if the town could move to a meter size, that would be ideal. I'll just put it that way. It does create the most fairness across the board. With your current structure with out-of-town, in-town, one could say that the infrastructure to support something out of your city limits is a little bit higher, right? That distance, I don't I don't know the layout or really where those water companies are at. But I'm I assume that they're not in-town. They're not annexed in the into city limits. So there is a little bit more infrastructure to support those. And most communities actually have a much higher charge for out-of-town than Payonya. It's usually one and a half times the in the in-town rate. So at that price, out-of-town for residential would be forty-eight, in-town would be thirty-two. So having that a little bit, that that's the standard that I see. They just say out-of-town is paying one and a half times in-town rates, and that's what their ordinance reads. So the fact that you're not at that level is good. And for the for for any any systems that use this type of structure, and this is a common structure because it's easy, right? Like, it's a commercial, it's it's kind of based on zoning, honestly. So So it's well-defined and it's justifiable. These are typical categories. And this would be typically what I would expect. Commercial slightly higher than residential and then out of town, higher than in-town. The in-town, out of town, I could support because of geographical differences and the longer pipe runs and infrastructure needs. The commercial, a little bit trickier, but if a commercial, I'm going to say this delicately, but commercial businesses generate a revenue. If they're equal to the residents, one could argue that residuals are supplementing commercials. And that's where you also have to be careful. But by meter size, you wouldn't care if something is commercial or residential. And that's where the fairness comes into play because it's based on the water that they would potentially use. But it's really important that the town designates, if it's a commercial business, it's getting a one-inch meter or it's getting a two-inch meter or how much water are you going to be using in need for fire flow and everything else? Then it has to have some justification behind the size of meter that's selected. And so some water companies have a two-inch meter, others have a three-quarter inch meter. And so it would be really tricky right now to say this water company is being charged this much and that water company is being charged differently. And yet they're identical in number of connections. So short answer, if you can move to meter, that would be great. Did I push a button and make a change? I, I'm not sure. Yes, sir. Just, yeah.
Ryan, these tiers that you have at the top that we can just see the top of right now, are those the, yeah, the, the rates per, like the breakpoints? I think you might have some, that's different than what we're charged right now. Is that intentional?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, it's, it's, it's intentional because at the beginning I mentioned that I couldn't actually build in every tier structure. So I made some assumptions, but towards the, towards the, they're only towards the, the higher user end.
Right.
And 75% of your customers are using the 30,000 or less. So I kept those the same.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So like the 405?
The 405 is an average between
Okay. I see, I see. You just like averaged across those like last four other brackets into like the three.
Correct, it was, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Do you need to go to the mic, Mary? I'm not sure.
So Ty, just to play with numbers, could we do the proposed $8 increase in base rate and see what that gives us?
We certainly can.
Ty, can you change the grant back to, or the?
Oh. Because that was the assumption that the grant would not be, would be received. Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And let me just make sure I get to the happy spot while it sits here and does this. So one suggestion I would have is we can see what the, the $8 does. I know that that $8 was really predicated on this really a big need to do the tank lining, right? That year one. What my suggestion would be is for the town to consider more of a consistent rate increase year over year of 1% or 2% or something like that. So you're, you're building in some type of, of cost adjustment due to inflation. Did it finish? Okay. So there we go. Yes, sir.
The problem with all these scenarios is we have not even come close to the one and a half to 2% affordability ratio.
That is true.
And it really impacts low-income families at an extreme amount than people that are at the medium income.
That is true. One thing that I have seen other, other communities do is it is, it is called a circuit breaker. What is the town, they have a, a small program to help if, if people do qualify that they can get a discount on their water bill. If the, if that, if that program was utilized more than it is currently, I could build that in where I could come back and instead of just having the in-town and out-of-town, I could build that, that customer class in here as well. So that it would show that revenue. And hopefully I was gonna, I asked a colleague if AWWA had changed that affordability structure. Now, really, sorry, I'm going too far here. A caveat with this affordability is it's actually 4% for both water and wastewater. And I have no idea what your wastewater rates are. Didn't do any, any identifying of that. So if your, if your wastewater bill is a little bit lower, then not, not just dollar, dollar wise, but if, I'll just ask, does anybody know what the average wastewater bill is? I'm hearing, I'm hearing 38, give or take? Okay, thank you. So this is where it becomes quite tricky. The, so the thing to keep in mind here is the affordability, sometimes we, it's really important to manage that. The high unaffordable rate that you have does position the town to get better grants and funds. And if you were able to do so because of that, the CIP number, we saw that what big increase that one grant made to the overall projection. We took a conservative approach to some of this, but there could be a project in here that is, is quite a bit bigger that, I'm just looking here for, I'm not sure what this item is, but this could be, just as, just as an example. Oh, it's that current water main, not a great example. I will, I will just say that there, some, so here's where, here's where towns blend in affordability. And it's not fully funding their capital improvement plan. So while I'm saying with all of the assets, the true cost of your water, the town needs to set aside 1.357 million per year to replace assets over time. Where you have to start balancing and managing, that's why I don't sit on a city council. Like that's a decision. But to fully fund this might mean that you can't meet that rate. Right? So that is, that is an important thing to do, but you also then have to balance that with, are we providing a level of service that we promise our customers? Are we providing clean, safe, drinkable water? And balancing that with the affordability. So one thing that can be done, so, okay, I, I have an idea. I don't know how this is going over. Anybody in the audience, please don't take this the wrong way. But you could say, I'm going to supplement my residential through some commercial. Because affordability is only focused on residential users. So if we said we're going to drop a residential down to 36, and we're going to come back and we're going to bill our commercial an additional $4 each. I'm sorry. So I, I put residential up four and commercial has actually gone up 12. B, right here? Oh, no, this is out-of-town residential. No. Oh, I have, well, let me just double check. I shouldn't say no so quickly. Out-of-town residential is B. Nope, that's fine. So we can see what this actually does. This should change affordability. Oh, and I didn't, I didn't go down far enough. I think that says 2.55 in, in this cell. And I don't know what kind of impact it will be because I, I, most of your users are on A and B. So we're not really seeing a big difference there. Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So I will admit I may be biased as a business owner in town. But I also want to remind the board that when we set our goals last year, one of our top goals was supporting local businesses. So I think doing an outsized rate increase on our local businesses might not be a, a great solution toward that. Right. And I also wanted to go back to what I had mentioned earlier and see if I can explain this well. So to say this is a net loss that we're not fully funding our reserves is also assuming we're putting in the exact same dollar amount for year over year for a project that's 100 years out. And to me, I feel like we should be scaling that because the utility of a dollar today is different than what the utility of a dollar will be, say 80 years from now. And my expectation is that it would be much easier for us to set aside a dollar, a hundred dollars, whatever in 2080 than that same dollar amount today where we could do more with it today with other spending. Does that kind of make sense? No? Okay. Right, that's my exact point is that inflation is going to hit it too. So why would we set aside $1 today and $1.80 years from now instead of saying, okay, scale it over time. So it's a dollar today, a dollar 50 next year, $2 the year after, taking us to 100 years out. And that since on the dollar that we're saving this year versus 50 years from now, we have more utility out of that remainder today than we do in 50 years because of inflation.
And I, I will say that while you're, while we're putting the 8.55 to that one item, you're not dedicating that 8.55 to that item. Right? So out of the capital improvement plan, you might have the, the, the things that are old, right? Or brand new, the things that were developed in 2020 are clearly going to have more time to build up. But what is important is out of the 1.35 million that I'm suggesting, you're going to be spending that on items you need in five years. Because they're like, it's just going to happen. So you don't have to set, it's not going to be an individual account and said, this is dedicated to that specific water line in 90 years. You're gonna, you're gonna have expenses and items that come up in five years that you're going to need roughly, like this is suggesting, 8.55 in 80 years. I, I do understand what you're saying there, but I'm also saying because they're pooled together, you can use those for any of these assets that fail. So you can use them to spend in the next year. And I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can build into what you're proposing without doing something manual in there.
No, I think it would, I think it would have to be super manual, I guess, but so I'm wondering what it would look like if we took out all of the projects that are, say, 30 years out or more and only look at, only include the projects in our capital asset plan that we anticipate over the next 30 years with a plan to, you know, revisit the capital asset plan on a regular basis. Like what, then what does our required reserve look like if we're focused on a shorter timescale? Does that make sense?
It does. It is. I don't know if I can do it on the fly.
Well, I'm not talking a one-year timescale. I think 30 years is still pretty, it's compared to where we have been, that gets us a lot further out.
I, I, I can just say I could do that. But that, I believe that would be a similar argument to where we're at now where the, in the 60s, 70s and 80s, they did not fund that project either. I would just be cautious, that, that's all. And because you can use that funding. And honestly, this 88, the big cost items are these items in the next three years. We saw what that did to our rates. If, if you could get, like even here, like what we just did, I, it was just a hypothetical with the commercials, but you're almost there with just that change. This one year right there, next year has a huge expense because you have two items that you don't have time to budget for. If you didn't have that tank lining and that pipe that needs to be replaced right away, if you could find a way to expand that, if you could find a way to, to not put that tank lining in, but you kind of have to have the tank lining done. But if you found a way to, to take that pipe that needs to be replaced and throw it out five years from now, it would have a massive impact on your budget. And so maintaining that pipe might be more important right now, that, that one pipe. If you could do that, you could probably save quite a bit of money in the budget from the rates. So let me make sure I go back so we're not, we don't have this. Correct, thank you. So where we can stand, I don't, I don't know if we can, sorry, did I have, see a hand up?
And just so you know, I'm not like just a random crazy, I mean, I'm a random crazy person, but I'm also on the Advisory Water Committee. So I have a special interest in all this stuff. But I was also wondering if you accounted for the additional base rates that some of us pay?
As standby?
No, not as standby. We have some users who are char, charged, like I, I pay two, some people probably pay five or six different base rates under the same bill. So there's only one meter number for that, but it has several multiples of base rates under it.
That was the bane of my existence for two nights. Yeah, I went through everyone, every single account that had multiple units that were billed. So in, in some cases, yes, one, one meter ID had three units billed. I put out three different meter IDs.
Okay.
Much, much like what I did with the, the, the companies. I did that for individual residents or commercials that had multiple units.
Okay, yeah, I got this, I think the same data set that you were given probably a couple of weeks ago.
Probably.
And I'm also trying to wrap my head around it, so I'd love to get your input.
Yeah, so that's, I did verify that's how it was billed and that's how it is in the model. So I, I don't know the next question. I'm, yes.
You also mentioned that we have a pretty extensive rate tier is, I'm guessing since it was outside the range of your model, it's outside the range of what you normally see. Would you recommend reducing the number of tiers that we have on our system?
Yes.
To?
That, that is up to you. It, it's actually based on the range of usage is really important. If you take out the water company data and you break it down into individual users within that water company, I think on, on average, like on the high end, I think you're, there, there's a couple individual users that are upwards. There's six, six digits in the summertime for irrigation. The structure I have here is not one I would, it, it's not bad. But typically what I would see is, is maybe the 1,000. I would see a 5,000, a 10,000, 25, 50, and maybe 100 or maybe 75. But where we would want to be with this is that a majority of your, that tier structure, and I, I can break that out a little further, just not here tonight. But what I would end up probably trying to propose is that we find the 50th percentile user. And then we make that be, give some justification. and then we make that be, give some justification to the tiers. So, we're not just willy-nilly throwing in numbers that seem nice to us, but using a 25 percentile, a 50, a 75 percentiles. And then making sure that the revenues are captured appropriately in each one of those quartiles and justify the tiers in some capacity there. If you have a highly variable usage, more is better to capture. And, and I, I would classify Payonya as a highly variable usage. You just have so many users that are, can be on the high end, especially in the summertime. So, I would break that down. I can, I can run that real quickly. If you wanted to see what those different tiers that I just proposed, I know that we're running short on time here, so, but I do want to and we're not going to change. We could do tiers for each different rate structure too, but that would really be, Cindy and Corinne would have my hide on that one, because it would be brutal to administer that, that billing structure. Okay. Let's just see what, I, I have absolutely no idea what this will do. I've also put the rates back to the 8%.
So, can I ask another question while we're waiting for that?
Absolutely.
We had talked about, you, you had mentioned conservation, and that's something we've talked about as a board before. And I personally feel like with our rate structure, our base rate is so high compared to our usage rate that it has to be a pretty huge difference in the amount of water used to make an appreciable difference on a bill. So, you're going to be like, $40 or use more than 5,000 gallons over that and go up to maybe $42? And, and I'm guessing, I don't think that's quite right, but something like that. So, when you talk about communities that are interested in conservation or promoting conservation, do you see a higher usage rate compared to the base rate? I guess is what I'm getting at.
And I don't know if I could give a straight-up ratio between base rate and usage rate. Most of what I see in communities, they're really focused on a very small handful of extremely high users. And that's where they're going to really tailor this upper level of this tier. Wouldn't be 10, it'd be 20. Like, if you're going to do it, you're going to pay and you're going to pay a lot, like, within the structure, I, I do want to say, like, this is pretty much the going rate in the state of Colorado and in the West, outside of California. Having a base rate in the, in the low to mid, or the, the mid to, mid 40s to low 50s, pretty standard now. It seems, it, it is expensive, but the cost of everything that we do in water is just going through the roof right now. It, it's tough. You can't get contractors. Federal funding is really up in the air. We don't know where it stands, which makes that, that variability quite dangerous, given that some of these projects are huge. Or you, you secure it, but you can't find a contractor to do the work. It, it just becomes quite challenging. And so, this is, this is honestly on par with, I, I would have maybe, maybe thought slightly lower, a dollar or two, just because you have so many users compared to what I'm, normally, the smaller the system, the higher the cost. The irony of all of it, right? And usually, the smaller the town, the lower the MHI. So, the affordability just gets tougher and tougher. Myself, on Denver Water, I think I pay a base rate of $36. And, uh, usage, they have three tiers that are structured. And so, my water bill with the scale of economy of Denver is still 45 bucks. And I use 10,000 gallons in the summer and 2,000 in the winter. So, um, it's just infrastructure and, and maintaining quality, like, meeting permit requirements are absolutely insane now. I would not envy any water operator right now trying to manage compliance with drinking water. So, you know, that's, that's fairly, it, it changed it slightly, but it didn't change too much. So, if, if you, if, if the council came out of this meeting tonight and said, I, I want that, I'd say, you're, you're actually pretty okay. Years one, two, and three, that's what I would expect. You just can't dig out of the hole in the first minute. It is quite apparent that that grant for that tank is really important and needs to invest time and energy into doing the best that that application can be. And while you're 464 in the hole over here, 464,000, years three, or years four and five, you're contributing back. So, within about four years, you will have a fully funded capital project in about 2029. But what that means is that this project in 2022 is really hurting the, it'll, it's going to take it seven years to build back that without that, without that grant. So, but in '25 and '26, you would be doing quite well in a comfortable place with, with funding a, a system and expenses in five years from now. So, this should be done, like I mentioned, probably every three to five years, looking at this cost of, of service analysis because you're going to dial in those projections better and better for the next five years.
So then, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. If we put in the $8 base rate increase, then we probably don't need to look at raising rates for three years?
I'm saying for five.
For five years. We don't have to look at raising rates.
If you put that in, you're really, you're in the hole because your expenses are so high. But because of, of the, the tier and inflation, we're, we're seeing more revenues generated. Actually, I shouldn't say inflation. Inflation shouldn't have any impact on there. Budget page. And I don't have access to revenue three. It is suggesting that revenue will, will be increasing, but only by 10,000, 20,000, stuff like that. That, oh, that's due to, I'm sorry, I know where that's due to. That's due to the idea that we're going to start to see a little bit more water usage again, where we're saying initially this would go down, we're going to have one, two, 1% growth each year in water usage, not in customers. And so, that's where your budget is increasing that much, and that's where, when your rates come back, in year four, your revenue is exceeding your overall expenses. Remember, capital improvements again are included in this. So, this is where we start to get where, where we want to be. Ideally, this number would be zero, but that is theoretical at best. So, years two and three are actually really good as well. It's only 8,000, $9,000. Like, that's, that's actually pretty much as close as we could get when we're talking 1.6 million revenue. We're within $8,000. It's this first year with that tank replacement. So, again, everything relies back on that grant. I will say too, if, if you wanted to raise rates without knowing the grant and you did get the grant, that capital improvement plan is really important to keep funding. Projects come up, emergencies come up, water rights come up. All different things come up all the time that you have to have some coffers to dive into if you want to fix it. And more reserves means better access to matching funds, which with the, with, I don't know where the infrastructure bill is going, if it, if it makes it through this in Congress, those funds are not just going to be handed out. You're going to have to have matching funds to, to get and receive them, which is kind of challenging for the systems that truly need those funds to have revenue. So, building up what that might be, or paying off, sunsetting a note soon, so you're not paying interest. You have a multiple of opportunities to where that could, you could then come back and say, I don't have to raise my rates for another three years after five. Like, that's a win because in my mind, it's, I think, rates should really be considered with inflation because the costs are going to continue to rise and your rates don't, your revenue stays the same. You're always going to be back in this boat, you're, you know, every five years. So.
Thank you.
Can we do one of those percentage increases as a growth factor? Never mind.
I, I, I could do one quickly, but just so, just so you could see, well, we need to make, we need to make up some stuff, so we'll just use years two and three. There's no necessary reason to do an increase on year four. And then this change did take a long time in the office, so. Okay. What? I'm not sure. Something else adjusted. That doesn't make any sense. I, I, yeah, it may have reconciled some. So, one thing I noticed when I was in the office, that as I was making changes, some I would make, I could make cha- like, they were all coalescing around themselves. So, I am going to Ctrl Z that. And take that back and just go back to where we were. That actually, I don't have any explanation for why revenue would drop. It says it's changed, but it's still, it, it's taking its sweet time.
So, uh, you're projecting these costs out over 100 years, and then you're only projecting your revenue portion out over six years. So, does that load the near term with unforeseeable costs? If you made the whole assumption based on a shorter time, is the numbers we're looking at going to go down?
And I will have to ask, so, let me clarify what I think I heard, because I want to make sure I'm answering correctly. So, because there is projections in here that go out 100 years, but yet I'm only projecting out the rates for six or five years, if, if there was an unforeseen cost, or that's where, could you please restate that, what you were?
Okay, I'll try again. If you can only foresee a short time to base your calculations you're doing now on, if you applied that same thought to the long term, that you aren't so sure about it, so you only take those expenses that have been identified for a shorter period of time, will that unload the present with what's unknown about the future?
It, it would. I think that was ideally what, what, yeah, what, what was being suggested.
Yes.
And the answer is yes. However, then I think you're missing part of the picture as well, because those assets are still in the ground and still deteriorating. So, the next, the 30 years from now, they're going to be playing that same game of, well, we're missing revenue to replace this pipe. And, and I know it's not 30 years because you're kind of, you know, it wouldn't, you wouldn't wait 30 years to do that. But what would be ideal is that you make this assumption now, in three years, you come back and say, was that a fair assumption? Are we over allocating? Because I'm taking your revenue and your reserves that are in the coffers and I'm allocating them out. And so, um, in three or five years, it would come back and, and you make those readjustments constantly.
I think I see what you're saying. The, the other thing I was curious about, doing a base rate increases is a very, it's kind of a regressive thing. There's people that are on fixed incomes. It seems like doing a usage-based, or increasing the reliance on the usage base takes some of the load off of the people that don't have as much money. And I don't think, if, if you really, it doesn't seem like there's a very heavy reliance on that in this model. Am I, is that correct?
So, there, there is a balance. The reliance on the, the model is actually just what the town structures right now. Your current reliance is 60, 40, give or take. 60% base, 40% usage. You run the risk again of, if people don't use water, you don't generate revenue then. So, you have to find a balance. I, I do agree that for the, the lower income, a base rate is very challenging. And, um, however, your, your note to the bank is there, whether or not you produce one gallon or a million gallons. And so, that has to be balanced.
The reality is, we've got people trying to buy their medicine and all of that too. And if you didn't raise, that, put that eight bucks on the lowest tier, it would be a very humane thing.
And I believe, that, that I would have to leave to the council, but that was my suggestion of, and there is a program currently in place to allow individuals that qualify to get a discount on their water bill. If, if that was expanded to, to a bigger subset of residents, I could manage that in the model and, and show what that meant for revenue. And I do want to say, lastly, I, I believe I know what happened here. And that was because I made all of these adjustments in this tier structure. I made 16 or 40 changes and it took 20 minutes to make that change. So, um, that's why the, the tier structure probably isn't the greatest. And what I would, what I would, my model for your tier structure, what I would suggest moving, like, I, I'll, I'll go back to where we were because you were sitting in a fairly good place, right, years four and five, and you were putting money back into the reserves. And I can, I can go ahead and redo that. Uh, I would propose that if the town wanted to look at a cost of service analysis even next year, something I could help with and I could build in all of the tiers so that we could really dive in and say, here's the tier structure and what this means. But given the quick turnaround for the 2022 budget, I know it might not be best. At the end of the day, your rates do need to go up because you're heavily underfunding your capital improvement program. And if you fully wanted to fund it, you would need to raise the rates roughly $8 a year.
Thank you very much, Ty. Much appreciated. I think this has been incredible information. The other thing that I would like to mention is Ty has offered to do a sewer rate study for us.
Did I? I think I did during this meeting, didn't I?
Yeah. So, if we want him to do that, that might be a really helpful thing as well.
It is often done with the water because of that affordability, right? Want to know the true impact to, to the customers on their bills. And so, a lot is, yeah. That, that's why they tend to be done, not necessarily in conjunction, but usually near each other in, in a timeframe.
Well, we can bring that up at a board meeting. All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you very, what, what?
At the end of this, so, we took up most of the time that we had scheduled, which was great, but we do need to have some kind of an idea as far as no voter decision-making, but some kind of a consensus on where the board wants Ty to work so that we can put that in the budget and bring it back to the board. Are we leaving it as with the $8 that is built in now, or what, what would the board like to, we need some kind of a consensus there?
It's a work session. And I think that decision is appropriate in a full board meeting with agenda.
That, so, um, as I understand that, and if that's what the majority of the board would like to do, that's fine. I would just remind that at the training that we also had, providing a consensus saying, hey, we're, we're all kind of saying, okay, let's, let's leave it at that eight and then get in a meeting and talk about it, is completely appropriate to do and has been stated. But either way.
If it would be all right with the council, I can, I can put together a final report at any time. I was actually anticipating having a report ready for you November 9. However, if, if, if that wants to be held off, I can put it together. I can still provide a report for that meeting. What I was looking, if, if it's possible, I just need to know how to draft. I can just simply draft, here's the information, here's where you need to go on some, on scenarios like we just did. I mean, this is very good information. I can draft a report that says, here's, here's where the town needs to be with I can draft a report that says, "Here's, here's where the town needs to be with water rates" for you to review and discuss at next week's council meeting, if you would prefer. Or I can hold off. If, if the 2022 budget cycle is, is just not in the framework, we can dial some of this in and we can come back and relook at this. It is, but I, I don't, I, I do want to provide you guys with a document that can be helpful for decision-making. That's the whole intent of this. So I do need some direction on, on how I proceed.
Well, one option I've heard is not hitting it all at once, but over a course of years, incremental increases. So that's one thing I'd like to see that would be helpful. Because hitting with an $8 increase in just one year seems like a lot. So maybe three scenarios. One is that more incremental. The second one would be, because I'm, I'm kind of thinking that the $8 all at once is just too much. That's me, just thinking. So that's why I want to look at other scenarios besides that eight. So maybe 65, 35? I mean, I'm sorry, 55, 45. Taking the base rate percentage to a lower amount so it's not hitting the low incomes quite so much. And 45 on the usage would be another scenario. And I'm probably mixing a few things here. And then. Trying to think of a third scenario. If anyone else can help me out with other scenarios, maybe Michelle.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we set our rate at the level that's considered affordable, what that would look like and, and how that impacts our reserves. And I don't know how you would show it, but I, I'm still going back to the idea that I don't know that we need 100 years of projections in there. Well, that's what's. Well, right, but some are 100 years and, and that's feeding into what we need to set aside next year. So I would like to see that backed off and say, we try, see what our reserve requirement is if we're looking at a 30-year time span or a 50-year time span instead of 100. Because frankly, I don't know that we've looked at any time span beyond a year before now. So I think getting even to 30 years is a big step for us.
I would like to see, so I'd like to see the, present us with the $8 thing. Just what you did tonight. I agree. Let's try and change the percentage, so 55, 45 on usage versus base rate and see if there's some kind of good thing in there. If we're going to do a shortened time span, I would say 50-year minimum because again, we, if we're at 30,000 and we're looking forward, then we really need to look forward to what's going to happen to people for 50 years down the road and are they going to have the money to be able to run the system? Okay. Well, everything's projection. So is that, yes, Timmy?
We could go with the 30 and then look next year at projecting farther out.
So what I'm hearing is the $8 increase, what we did tonight. I can easily do a kind of, raise the rate slower, bring, bring the base rate in under eight, but bring it up gradually. And then I can also take out assets that are replaced later than 30 years and see how that impacts the, the capital improvement. I can say, I can try to meet the affordability number like that. It's just, it's going to be $22. Like, it, it's just straight up a number. It's just 2% of 41 or 20% of that. So it's just, it's, it's going to be really tough. The only way to make that work is if you found funding in your capital program through grants and your low MHI does make it easier to get a higher percentage of grant funding for projects. So you should, should take advantage of that as well. And you may want to try to take advantage of any funding that the federal legislation pushes out soon because it's probably a one or three-year kind of deal and then it's not going to be there again. So five years ago, we were saying federal funding is going away. You're going to get 25% funds. But now with everything that's happening, there might be an opportunity to take advantage of some of that. But I can do those three scenarios is where I'm at. I can, I can draft those three scenarios and have a document provided to you by the 9th. I can virtually call in to answer any questions associated with that document. I believe so. I need to check my calendar, but I think I am free on the 9th. So that's what I'm hearing.
I think we more or less have board consensus. Yes, Dave?
I hate to throw cold water on it, but if it comes in on the 9th, then none of us have a chance. It's kind of like tonight. None of us have a chance to review it and really think about it. I wonder about the second board meeting in November.
The issue is, that's the public hearing.
Right, so we have to have a budget right there.
And, and that's part of the reason too that we pushed for consensus because this is, it is, came at a late hour to do the study, but that was when, how it was presented and how, I mean, when the opportunity presented itself to us. But if we wait until the 9th for the board to, to make a, you know, make even a consensus on what to see and then bring it back on the 23rd, the 23rd's the hearing and so you're really tying your hands at that point.
Does the hearing have to be in November or could it be in December?
Right, right. It does. It would have to be in November, which has also been what's advertised, because we had to advertise it by certain dates, is that's the advertised date. And because there's the requirement that it has to be submitted and presented by, to the board by a certain date, certain in December.
When, when we have the meeting on November 9th, if we need more time to discuss this issue, could we add a special meeting for the week following to have it in between?
Yes, I fully expected that that was a possibility, that that would happen, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll do everything I can to have it to you before the 9th. But that is a short turnaround for about a 60-page document.
I just want to thank you, Tyler, because this was way beyond what I thought we were going to get. It was, I wasn't sure what this document was going to provide and it's such a high level of detail and there's so much to it that I just can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just have a question about the information you've been provided. Is there a 3% impact fee that's being taken out of the water fund to pay for the streets that you've been given for the cost of the system? Because if it is, it's technically not legal to be taking money out of the enterprise funds unless it's been named by law. And we don't have any law that says we can be taking 3% out as a franchise fee out of our water business.
Suzanne, this is a different discussion.
And I'm wondering how that might affect water rates, these extra monies that are being taken out to fund street repair.
Okay, Suzanne, that's a different discussion.
I, I know, but I'm wondering if he's been given these numbers to calculate into our water rates is what I'm wondering about as the cost of doing the water business in this town. And, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
The answer is yes, Suzanne.
Yes, because I don't think that's correct.
All right, thank you very much. We're done.